...2025, if you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with the breathing and justice for all. Okay. Starting in, uh, routine matters, um, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following routine matters: Board of Education Meet Minutes for August 12th, 2025, and CSE recommendations according to what's on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, right off the bat, presentations, building updates by principals. Who would like to go first? Well, look at that.
Wow.
It's like his chair was on fire.
That would be right up.
I'll get it. I'll be the first. Um, so I'd like to say the high school's off to a good start. We had a pretty solid back-to-school drop-off event. Um, you know, we got a lot of feedback from the tenured teachers in terms of like head count of people coming through the building. But as I've already said to the team multiple times, it's never too early to think about how to do it better. So we've already got plans to expand that, partner with community schools with some of their events, and kind of have a one-stop shop for different things that we're looking for all under the same umbrella. Um, for this part of the school year, attendance is clocking in just a hair under ninety-six percent. One of the changes that I have been bringing with me is the insistence we're going to run an attendance committee in the school. As we well know, attendance isn't just about kids who just don't want to come to school. Sometimes they're kids who have barriers to come to school. Parts of that committee are community resources, uh, social workers, our guidance counselors, and stuff like that. And it's also a vehicle for me as an administrator to ensure accountability so I can see all the pieces that are reaching out to Camp St. Kids. Uh, coming in new, it's been very important for me to do a lot of evaluation on the fly. I've worked with Mr. Krausy, who served the community last year, as well as Mr. Karolsek, our administrative intern, to do a lot of evaluation of pieces that are in the school. Some big, some little. I'm looking for things, um, is, so, does it flow to student performance? Does it value, um, taxpayer money, right? Some of those changes are little things you might have seen, like digitizing the student handbook. It's a huge expense to print those things out each and every year. That is a waste of money. Those are things that we're looking for opportunity because things like that, the teacher binders that we give out in the beginning of the year is always looking for opportunity to maximize the funding our school gets. Um, other big pieces are revamping our grade level meetings so that we're taking and having the appropriate interventions for struggling students. Um, at this point, we're ready to wind up with extracurriculars. Um, you know, parts of that confirmation are coming tonight. Um, I've already talked to some of those presumptive people, um, about their plans to get some of these things up because as we well know, a lot of kids come to school just for those. Um, principal's cabinet has launched. Uh, this is a near and dear one to me. Um, I got twelve applicants in less than two hours to sit on that advisory committee for me. Um, I expect that number to be around thirty when it's all said and done with. This, I say this to the board, is a vehicle for me to accentuate and just give a megaphone to students. They are our biggest stakeholders, let's be honest. And I want them to have a seat at the table on how we shift this building to be in a position to better serve them. Um, and as I've come aboard with Mr. Vaseta, uh, one of my focuses has also been the advisory period that was added, uh, last year, I believe. Um, part of that in the short term, given, you know, coming in in July and we're two months away from the school year, is taking things like guest speakers. What is one thing that we can do to open up our kids to a presumptive future? Put somebody who's already in that future in front of them and talk about those things. So in partnership with Connected Community, uh, we actually are starting with some vaping prevention work this month. They're going to do individual presentations because we know that stuff is a scourge on basically every high school nation. Um, we're looking at expanding up a different offerings during this time. This is thirty minutes set. It needs to have a lot of value to kids. And some of this is going to be a little bit more of a long game, but I'm going to push as much as I can this year into that time period. We've also have, um, the wonderful, uh, Ms. Groffalo and Mr. Smith coming into those advisory periods to talk about the credentialing program, our partnerships with outside organizations. Um, and I'd say another thing, uh, you know, we have a program at our school called Naviance. Part of Naviance is they do an interest inventory, and they can start those inventories in middle school. Well, what about popping people in those interests? You start looking at common interests in the building, you start slating guest speakers for those interests. You will find that you see that has a direct impact on kids' desire to be here at school, be here on time, and really push through their studies because you're going to show them the endgame. Um, we had a Chromebook launch this week, uh, you know, talking to the wonderful gentlemen who are behind me and those people. Amazing team here stepping out to support the tech department. For grade seven through twelve, ninety-four percent of kids have a Chromebook in less than two days. I gotta tell you, from an old tech nerd myself, that is very impressive, okay? Um, lastly, we've got some upcoming events. Uh, you know, we've got college visits. The high school guidance department does a wonderful job of getting colleges in here, exposing those kids, um, to possibilities for their future. And it goes without saying, but I'm going to say it anyway, here comes homecoming right around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karol.
Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Mr. Gerblik.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah, so for the middle school, we're also off to a great start this year. Um, the students are settling in nicely, and so am I. Um, our supply dropped, and our teacher meet and greet had a great turnout on September second. I was very impressed to see how many families actually even participated in that. Uh, we've had one cell phone issue to date, so I think the new policy and implementing that has been going pretty well. Uh, we've also started restructuring how we do the grade level meetings at the middle school. We're trying to make those more, uh, efficient and a useful time for, you know, the teachers and the grade level reps. Uh, we're working with Connected Communities as well to start, uh, trying to implement the mentoring program at the middle school. We're hoping by the end of the year to start having, uh, our eighth graders become mentors for the younger students. Our attendance is off to a great start as well. Right now, we're at about ninety-eight percent for the first few days. Uh, we've already started making attendance calls for students who have had multiple absences. Uh, some upcoming events for the middle school. Our picture day is coming up next week on the eighteenth, and we have an FBLA welcome back dance scheduled for October seventeenth. Uh, we have a five to six thirty time slot for the seventh, or fifth and sixth graders, and a seven to nine time slot for the seventh and eighth graders.
Pretty good.
Think you're gonna dance?
I am not. But you're welcome to come to your own.
Can you read one? Just a few updates from Southside. I have some stuff here that I can help put down here. Well, we too are off to a tremendous start for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And it's just all due to students being prepared, our teachers, that devotion that they, um, you know, invest in planning, uh, to welcome those students, and of course, our parents. Um, so we just want to thank you. We have a, I keep saying a school full of pretty amazing kids. So really off to an exciting new year. Um, drop and go, again, the concept is pretty simple. It's quick. Drop, drop off what you need to, meet your teacher, and they were out of there. But it really does serve a purpose. It's breaking the ice. It was, uh, really a fun night. Uh, we also had our first PBIS assembly this week on Monday. So when we gather that student body together, it's always , uh, important. And we, uh, our focus this month is on teamwork. So those students who demonstrate that they can work as a team, we celebrate them with a Student of the Month. Um, and I'll talk about that throughout the year. They get their certificates, they get their badge, they're celebrated for doing what's right. Um, I just want to share some, some resources. Um, when they come in during the summer months and, and we're storing them, I'm thinking, I gotta show this stuff. Um, so for our Eureka Mass Squared curriculum, it's taught in modules. So every student receives a learn book. So they're using this workbook along with the teacher, um, as she's bringing that here, she are bringing them through the concepts that they're learning. They also receive an apply book. So they look pretty similar, but the apply book is just that. It's the application of what they've learned in, in class. And they can be doing some of this work, um, as, you know, an exit ticket, or that, that's what parents should be looking for with homework, um, from the apply book. It, for CKLA, every student receives a reader, so filled with fiction, nonfiction stories. Um, this is taught in units. So every unit, a child will receive a reader. And then, of course, to complement that as well, they receive their workbook. So they're responding to questions from that text that they have read, um, in their workbook. So again, I just wanted to show the resources because it's pretty amazing what is provided to students, um, given, you know, this, this approval of yours. And it's just really good resources for them as they're learning. Science, Science Weekly, um, Studies Weekly is the, that we're, the company. Um, we launched K three last year. So I know I showed it last year, but every student receives a weekly periodical, so with texts, um, but more. There's, there's graphic organizers, there's charts that they're reading. Um, so they're learning about text structure and a lot more, you know, as they're going through the curriculum. So all those curriculums support one another, right? Um, ELA, they're learning, they're connecting the concepts that they're learning, and teachers do it so beautifully, um, you know, building on those concepts they've learned and the background knowledge that they carry with them from year to year to gain that new knowledge. So really tremendous resources that we provide our students. Um, and they, I don't know, I just feel like we're going to thrive this year with how we've set them up for success. We have ninety-six third grade students at Southside and eighty-three fourth grade students. And, um, just finally, I just wanted to mention that our, our PTA, our first PTA meeting is next Monday, that Jenny and I will meet with PTAs throughout the year once a month. Uh, and they do this, their planning throughout the year. Their first, uh, meeting is their budget planning. So they create, they create their budget, you know, that whatever resources are coming in and what they're going to spend it on. And having two schools is not easy, but they make it look easy, you know, and the equity is there. They, they seem to have this, you know, knowing of what each and every grade level and each and every, um, you know, subgroup needs. So I can't thank those guys enough. It's, it's just really a strong team, um, to support, support student learning. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are off to a wonderful start at Peterborough Street, also enjoying a very smooth opening. We currently have two hundred and seventy students at Peterborough, uh, thirty-two pre-K friends, uh, eight of whom are three-year-olds. We have our, three-year-olds are sprinkled through all four sections this year. Uh, eighty-three kindergarten friends, eighty-four first graders at this minute, and seventy-one second graders. So we're down a little bit, um, enrollment-wise. We had that really big class that moved up to Ellen over at, uh, Southside. So, uh, we're down a little bit than we were, uh, last year. We had a wonderful turnout for our pre-K and kindergarten orientations at the end of August, and our drop-in and drop-off event was also highly successful and well-attended. We had about eighty percent of our students visiting with their families and taking a bus ride around the block. Um, so that was exciting. We are happy to be operating on a six-day rotation this fall at Peterborough Street, and the students are loving having a variety of specials and being able to interact with so many different adults in so many different settings. We've had an amazing number of breakfast eaters this week. Um, we fed everyone in classrooms the first two days, and, uh, yesterday we fed a hundred and ninety-one students, and we fed two hundred students breakfast today. So seventy-four percent of our kiddos are starting their day off with a really healthy breakfast at school. So there's no better way to start the day. So we're very excited about that. Our pre-payers and kindergarteners eat in their rooms, and our first and second graders eat in the cafeteria. And right now, we're about at capacity with our current cafe. Uh, so we're definitely looking forward to the renovations and the capital project hitting Peterborough, uh, in the spring and the summer. So, um, we've been formally teaching our PBIS expectations in all settings to make sure students know how it looks and how it sounds to be safe and respectful and responsible at Peterborough Street, especially in less structured settings like the cafeteria and on the school bus. Uh, Cindy and the transportation department brought a couple buses over so that we could all take our turns and go out there and practice. Um, so I'm very, very proud of our students. Um, our school counselor, Ms. Citron, I gave teachers some fun new tools and resources for their calm down corners, uh, in their classrooms. So students all have a safe and cozy space if they need a moment, or if they happen to be struggling with big emotions or a transition, getting back into the school routine and everything. And it's a very long day when things have been less structured and they've been home all summer. So, um, that is working out nicely. I'm very proud of, of our teachers for what they have put in place there, and our kiddos are using those spaces, um, effectively. So some highlights by grade level, uh, pre-payers are practicing fire drills, learning their daily routines and making new friends. In kindergarten, we're sorting objects, talking about similarities and differences, learning nursery rhymes in their knowledge unit, and working on pre-writing strokes of our horizontal and vertical lines. And in social studies, they're learning about communities and school rules. First grade started a social studies unit about being good citizen, and they're practicing proper letter and number formation with fun manipulatives like blocks and cubes and markers and Play-Doh, along, of course, with paper and pencil practice. So there's just pictures on both sides here. So you can see them, some of our first graders in action with that. And our second graders are super excited. Their first unit in math is on graphing, and picture graphs are what they're focusing on right now. So they think that is really cool, and they're having a lot of fun with that. And to show our school spirit, we are wearing class colors on Friday for our spirit day. Spirit.
How's the cell phone policy reception been at the high school?
You know what? I apologize to the board. I would have loved to have put that in. It has slipped my mind. We've only had about three customers, let's say, customers per day since lunch. Um, honestly, I could not be happier with that. Uh, we've been responsive to those folks indicated, and on at least six to seven occasions, I've had conversations with kids who say they like it. It's less of a distraction, and I wasn't paying.
Okay. Any other comments? Uh, moving along, uh, new business. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following new business items: Transportation agreement with Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Otis Elevator Contract Renewal for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the bus right agreement for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, uh, APPR Teacher Lead Evaluator Recertification for Ellen Burns, Karen Henner, and Emily Nugent, um, memorandum of agreement on Brian Dwyer and the CTA with the district effective September first, twenty-twenty-five through June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-six. Resolution authorizing participation in the Cooperative Energy Purchasing Service for electricity. Resolution authorizing participation in Cooperative Energy Purchasing Service for natural gas. An agreement for athletic training services with CNY Orthopedics August first, twenty-twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, next up, let's see. Student board member. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint the following student board members for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. And this year we have two. A roll so nice, we filled it twice. So, um, Rowan Dwyer and Ty Hawkins. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Welcome aboard, Rowan.
I know at the next meeting, he'll be sitting up at the, at the table, but that'd be nice for Rowan to be able to give a little update. Um, a lot of us already know Rowan, but we thought it'd give him a chance to introduce himself and tell us a little bit about himself and, and, uh, get his tenure on the, uh, on the board started, so.
Uh, yeah, I am, uh, student class president for the class twenty-twenty-six. Um, Ty Hawkins, who will be here for most of the other board meetings, is the vice president. Um, Ty is also the president of National Honor Society, so he'll be able to update you with anything from that.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on, committee reports. Let's start with, um, well, we, I'll give the update on academic committee. Um, we just met, uh, tonight and basically trying to continue to keep up to date with the, um, new graduation standards or the portrait of the graduate as the information trickles out like frozen mud from the state, trying to, uh, kind of wrap our minds around that to figure out what that's going to look like. Sorry. And to, uh, to get a handle on that. Um, additionally, continued discussion on student retention and, uh, remediation plan. Uh, am I missing anything? I think that's about it. Let's see. Uh, I will also do the facilities committee since I'm speaking already. Um, we have not met since the last meeting. However, there was a walkthrough that was conducted last week, or a couple weeks ago that I wasn't able to go to. Um, we are constantly updated from the gentleman at Turner Construction, day in and day out anyway. Tracy, do you have anything to, to add that you would like to add?
Do you want me to?
I mean, to put you on the spot, but.
No, I mean, um, do you want me to do it in that report, or you want to do it in here?
That's fine to do it now because we're talking facilities, so it probably makes sense to go ahead.
Perfect. Um, so I did hand out this, this month's report. Again, um, some, some photos, but anybody that's been on campus certainly can see what's happened, um, in the last two months, and now actually live. Uh, myself, Ms. Henner, uh, the SPOs, several other members of, of our staff have been outside, uh, the two days last week while we opened, and will be outside through this week. Um, and seeing what has been happening over the last couple of years, specifically with the Robert Street end of the parking area, students walking, um, traffic, um, bikes, scooters. It is amazing. Um, very, very seamless. I'm not sure if anybody drops off. I know we have some of the kids that that walk through, but I'm not sure if anybody has dropped off. Quick, um, buses aren't clogged up. We're not seeing clog up in front of Robert Street. We are hearing that we've got a little bit of backup because the traffic pattern has changed a bit over on Canal. Um, I come in from the back end. It's much smoother than it, than it's been in the past. Um, but, I mean, we've got that ten minutes, and they're coming right around. Drop off is always quick, right? Um, pickup is always a different bear because you don't know who's coming out, you don't know who's in the parking lot. But I think both of those lots have been a very nice addition, safety-wise, and the additional parking. Um, it'll be nice in the next month. The, the landscaping will land, the trees will land, you know, it doesn't just stay out there with straw. Um, the flagpole landed, um, and our flag is up, so, so that was nice. Um, the light, the lighting is in, the posts will land. So, um, parking lots, the few touching, few final touches will, will be happening over the next month as, as it's weather-related. Um, the cafeteria at Robert Street, we're on task. We still have some couple items, as we've talked about, that are very tight in timeline, but the timeline hasn't moved, so we're thankful. Um, those, those last pieces that we need, either HVAC pieces or the, um, the freezers, those were late shipments just because that is, that is the nature of the business there. But we haven't seen any changes. We do have a meeting tomorrow, an owners' meeting, um, and we'll make sure that that stays on task. But, um, I know our committee was through that space a few weeks ago. We're through that space on a daily basis, and, um, walls are off, all the ductwork is off. Um, it, it's going to be a really, a really amazing space. Um, the guidance area, we're targeted for the end of September. I think we're going to be a little bit ahead of time there. We were waiting on door framing, and that was expected to not land until the end of the month. It's here, and the framing is up. So we'll move, um, you know, that, that's moving along, and I think we'll get in there a little bit sooner than we had expected there because those folks are kind of in a makeshift area right now. Um, but, you know, again, any, anything that you see or hear, please pass it on to us. I'm outside constantly. Same thing with, um, Nick. You know, he's hands-on with these guys every day. We're always looking to make sure that the, um, area is shored up and safe. Um, but if, if you see something, please bring it to my attention, and we'll make sure that we, we take care of it. Uh, I think we're, I think we're moving along.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Policy.
Policy, we will be meeting on September twenty-second.
Okay. Finance?
Uh, we have not met yet. We will meet before the next meeting in October, and that will be the audit.
Correct.
Um, so that will be presented to the committee beforehand, um, and then to the full board after that.
And safety.
We haven't met yet. We are scheduled to meet on October sixteenth.
Okay. Okay, board comment period. Is anybody? Anyone? Anyone? Going once. Okay, moving along, superintendent's report. Sean.
Uh, just want to really thank, um, everybody for their efforts in making it a smooth start to the year. There's always some things that you're dealing with that are, you know, there's some wrinkles that you have to iron out, but, uh, you know, real, looking at our, our, uh, staff members here, principals and leaders, I think really all in all did a really nice job. Really calm, um, going through the halls, you know, the halls are calm and quiet and respectful. And we've talked a lot about the fact that's the building block of, for a good school, you know, that we want a calm environment, a respectful environment. And I think we're off to a good start to establish that, and then the goal is to maintain it. Um, really also want to thank, uh, Nick Campell and his staff because it is doubly difficult when you're, uh, just getting the school ready in a, in a normal year, I'll call it a normal year, is, is always a challenge. There are a lot of moving pieces and, and challenges. Uh, when you're doing it in, in a pretty major capital project happening at the same time, it gets really tricky. And so, a lot of moving pieces and a lot of eleventh-hour curveballs that, uh, Nick and his team have dealt with, but they've done a, I think, a really good job and should be commended for, for a job well done. And I know they'll continue to do a good job. As, we're going to be in this for a while, as Tracy said, uh, but it's, it's been very positive. We're going to continue to look at traffic patterns, uh, looking at parking. Uh, we also are really looking forward to the next phases. If we could only get to that by snapping our fingers and getting to the completion of the whole project because we know that there are logistical improvements on the way for Peterborough and Southside, as well as this project, uh, continues to move. So looking forward to, to all of that. As far as, uh, other things related to opening day with, you know, it's a time to welcome new people. We're really excited about the new staff members that we're able to open, uh, as we opened, welcoming on our new, new staff orientation, also on our opening day. Um, I think we have a really, uh, great group of new people joining us. And we also had a chance to celebrate some people who've been with us for a while. So it's a nice mix of welcoming the new people and celebrating people who've really made contributions, uh, for years. Uh, some of them are also here tonight, as, that we recognize several. Um, so I always like to do, I must be a So I always like to do, I must be a frustrated, I'm sitting next to a math person, I must be a frustrated math person, I always like to do the cumulative numbers, and so, but I looked at, we recognize people who are, who, starting at 10 years, who had 10 years, then 15 years, on those anniversary dates, so people in between will get it when they get to those 10, 15, in five-year increments. So in total, starting at 10 years, we had 27 people reaching an anniversary date of service specifically in Canistota, and the total cumulative years of service to the district were 540 years for those 27 people, which is a nice neat average of 20 years per person. So obviously spread out over those different thresholds, that's a lot of people, 27 people just in this year alone, just in this group that was recognized, averaging 20 years of service to the district, so pretty cool, and really want to continue to acknowledge, you know, decades of service to the district, that's what makes, one of the things that makes Canistota a great place is that we have the glue people who've been here for a long time and who really live and breathe Canistota and want the best for it, so congratulations and thank you to all of those people that were recognized. We started this, it's now sort of a tradition, we started it a few years ago and now it's become a regular thing, when they receive their anniversary pin.
The first year was COVID.
Yeah, COVID.
They had their masks on in the pictures.
Yeah, no masks on pictures this year. We're still working on numbers, I know some of the numbers were given in the principal updates, we're still looking at our total numbers, we're happy to see that we have, you know, nearly, you know, 1,200 suits in building, but we're still working on our total district population with students who are in out-of-district placements but still part of the Canistota program. I just want to mention because it's something we, for years I've monitored, and districts really look at that closely, of how are we maintaining our population, you know, and it's a real concern, especially in New York State and upstate New York. There are some districts that have had a pretty precipitous drop in enrollment, and that is concerning, and we, knock on wood, have really done well in that area. Do we have some classes that are bigger than others? For example, last year was a pretty large graduating class, and then you'll have some classes that are a little bit lower, yes, but no pattern, no trend to that. Typically, if you've had a lower enrollment class, it bounces back up, so we've really dodged it, and, you know, we're fortunate that our numbers are still healthy, we're working on getting our finalized, it's always a moving target, but getting our, you know, after the first week or two of the year, we'll have a pretty good idea of where we stand in total, in district and in extended programs of the Canistota program. So good to see that. And, you know, as we're complimenting the staff, really want to compliment the kids when we talked about the cell phone policy and just the calm in the building, well, they're a big part of that. They've been very respectful and cooperative with their principals and with their staff, and again, we want to keep it that way, but, you know, they've done a great job because there are changes, and it's part of life, and there are changes, and it's not always easy, but we appreciate them giving their best effort to work with us in a positive way. Just a couple of things, other things on the horizon, couple of things related to, we have what I think is going to be a real positive thing, our new athletic advisory council has their first meeting coming up on the 25th, and so that's really going to be a representative group, it's going to be representative group, myself, representative group of the board, our athletic director, coaches from each programs will be represented, and then our partner organizations, because everybody has an interest in, you know, from our youth leagues to our boosters to, so it's really an attempt to get everybody together who really has an interest in seeing the best for our athletes and our programs, and a chance to put our heads together and solve problems, identify opportunities, clarify things, I think it's really going to be a positive thing, really looking forward to it. This is not a one-time and then we're done thing, it's nothing that we have to do, it's something that we like the idea of doing because we see a real value to this as far as communication and problem-solving and connecting the dots. So it will be, most likely, we'll work on the schedule when we have that initial meeting, but it'll probably be a recurring meeting, you know, several times during the course of each school year, so that we continue to talk about the things that are on people's minds, looking forward to that. And then another thing we wanted to mention that was on is the Action Night of tonight, a contract with CNY Orthopedics was approved, this is something that has been worked on for quite a while, it's a great, looking at Mr. Cianciola, and he was, he's been very involved in trying to move this forward, and so we're really pleased that we've gotten to the point where we have that athletic training services that our students and families will be able to access to make, getting treatment and care easier, and again, it's about connecting the dots, so we're really pleased that that's happening. It took us a while to get there, it is, it's, but we got there, and we're pleased, and we're going to start seeing that in action in the near future. And actually, when I say near future, it will be, you'll start to see a presence at our events and office hours in the building during, while we're still in this fall season, so more to come on that, but you'll be seeing that. And our strategic plan, again, we launched work on that, we had three lively sessions that were well-attended, you know, 30, 40 people usually at those sessions, and then we had a little bit of a pause over the summer, I say a little bit because there was still work happening behind the scenes, our administrative team had been working on pulling together some pieces to that puzzle, we talked about it a little bit more at our academic committee tonight, but there's going to be a lot of movement on there now that we're back together in the fall to really define what do we aspire to be over the next five years as a school district. So this, again, is not something that we create something and it collects dust, you know, this is going to be something that really guides and shapes our work every day and is stuff that really reflects what's important to us, from academic achievement, opportunities for students, to how we take care of our facilities, how we operate in general, in the big picture, so more will be coming on there. And I'll end with a promo for our upcoming, if those of you who watch sometimes Channel 9 in the morning, on October 3rd, we are going to be the host district for the Friday Morning Lights segment. That is, if you're projecting ahead in the calendar, that is the date of our homecoming game, that is when we play Oneida, and again, they're going to be broadcasting very early, they start at like 5:00 in the morning, they broadcast through 7:00. And it's a chance, we're working on some of what that's going to look like internally and with the Channel 9 people, but it'll be a chance to really highlight our kids, our program, our school, a really cool opportunity, hope for good weather, we'll be prepared, whether it's inside or out, makes it a little more difficult with the project, but we'll just hope for good weather.
And people who want to get up at 4:30.
Well, that's the other thing, so.
I already makes it fun.
Oh, I, well, there's no doubt you are going to be there, I figured you would be the lead-in person, you know, yes, we already penciled you in for that, so. So a lot more to come in the next few weeks, but there'll be a pretty nice build-up to that along with all of the things tied to homecoming as well.
Sean, can I do a quick shout-out on our playground grant?
Yes.
Thank you. So Tracy Quinn, who was a previous board member, had initiated a DASNE grant several years ago, so I am happy to be able to bring it home for her. It's taken quite a bit of time to get it where it needs to be, and yesterday we kicked off the implementation of an additional playgrounds out at Robert Street. So this is not part of the capital project, this is a DASNE grant that Tracy had started several years ago. I was actually in touch with her today and shot her off some pictures that we broke ground, so Friday she's going to come on site, and Brenda's going to do a little story, and we'll take some pictures and, you know, have like a pretend ribbon cutting for the playgrounds back there. So that's a low ropes playground that's adjacent to the existing playground with the addition of a Gaga pit, and also we'll put out some information of what a Gaga pit is.
Good idea.
But it is all the rave of children, yes, so, yeah, and Zach is going, well.
I reserved her last night.
Yeah, so it will be completed on Friday as long as we get the final inspection done Friday, it'll be open for students on Monday, so.
Awesome. Personnel recommendations, all appointments are pending clearance on fingerprinting. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept the following letters of retirement and/or resignation. Helen Seif's letter of retirement as a bus driver effective at the end of the day on January 30th, 2026. Stephanie Emmerich's letter of resignation as a teacher aide-school monitor effective September 1st, 2025. Danielle Shank's letter of resignation as a teacher aide-school monitor effective August 28th, 2025. And Janelle Page's letter of resignation as a music teacher effective September 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Subвод?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint the following permanent appointments. Stephanie Emmerich as permanent office assistant one at 1805 an hour effective September 2nd, 2025.
Should I also say resolved?
Okay.
You're fine, go ahead.
Okay, so, wait, do a motion on that now, or just read this one as well?
Keep.
Keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're all permanent.
Okay. Resolved that Carly Murray is hereby appointed on a probationary basis in the tenure area of English with the understanding that the named individual does hold New York State certification appropriate to or required for that position, that the probationary appointment shall commence on 9/1/2025, that the probationary appointment shall expire on August 31st, 2028, and that the named individual to be eligible for an appointment on tenure upon expiration of the probationary period, it shall be necessary but not sufficient that the individual has received an annual professional performance review rating of either effective or highly effective in two of the three years of the probationary service, and has not received an annual professional performance rating of ineffective in the final year of the probationary appointment. As based on ratings derived in compliance with the education law section 3012D at step 17 bachelor plus masters plus 30 hours at $67,818. Do I have a motion?
We have the other one?
We got to go.
Yeah, I think you have to go, I'm confused at the wording, so apologies.
Okay.
You need a motion after Stephanie and then a separate motion after Carly.
All right, let's rewind. Okay.
I apologize.
That's a, um, so resolved Stephanie Emmerich as a permanent office assistant one at 1805 per hour effective September 2nd, 2025.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I have to read this again? I'll read it again, just to be safe. Okay, resolved that Carly Murray is hereby appointed on a probationary basis in the tenure area of English with the understanding that the named individual does hold New York State certification appropriate to or required for that position, that the probationary appointment shall commence on 9/1/2025, the probationary appointment shall expire on 8/31/2028, and that the named individual to be eligible for an appointment on tenure upon expiration of the probationary period, it shall be necessary but not sufficient that the individual has received an annual professional performance review rating of either effective or highly effective in two of the three years of probationary service, and has not received an annual professional performance rating of ineffective in the final year of the probationary appointment, as based on the ratings derived in compliance with the education law section 3012D at step 17 bachelor plus masters plus 30 hours at $67,818. Do I have a motion?
Subвод?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that Tyler Reifenberg is hereby appointed on a probationary basis in the tenure area of music with the understanding that the named individual does hold a New York State certification appropriate to or required for that position, that the probationary appointment shall commence on October 10th, 2025, that the probationary appointment shall expire on 10/9/2029, and that the named individual to be eligible for an appointment on tenure upon expiration of the probationary period, it shall be necessary but not sufficient that the individual has received an annual professional performance review rating of either effective or highly effective in three of the four years of the probationary service, and has not received an annual professional performance rating of ineffective in the final year of the probationary appointment, as based on ratings derived in compliance with the education law section 3012D at step 4, $51,496. Do I have a motion?
Subвод?
Second?
Second.
Second? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint the following substitutes. Helen Seif as a substitute bus driver at 2520 per hour effective January 21st, 2026. Stephen Tofti as a non-certified substitute teacher at $120 per day effective September 10th, 2025. Ava Berthelsen as a non-certified substitute teacher at $120 per day effective September 10th, 2025. Shannon Schneider as a non-certified substitute teacher at $120 per day effective September 10th, 2025. Rachel Scott as a non-certified substitute teacher at $120 per day effective September 10th, 2025. Jamie Snyder as a long-term certified substitute teacher at $257 per day effective September 1st, 2025. Bonnie Dwyer as a substitute food service helper at $1695 per hour effective September 10th, 2025. Rosemary Langy as a certified substitute teacher at $140 per day effective September 10th, 2025. Andrew Pino as a retired substitute teacher at $160 per day effective September 10th, 2025. And Jamie Cicirelli as a certified sub-teacher at $140 per day effective September 10th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Subвод?
Second?
Second.
Both in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Coaching appointments. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint the following paid coaches for the 2025 fall season. Boys assistant varsity soccer, Wana Lava, step 7, $3,833. Modified field hockey, Isabel Hart, step 1, $2,964. Boys modified soccer, Todd Harvey, step 1, $2,964. Do I have a motion?
Subвод?
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Other, resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve Colleen Fenari's request for an unpaid leave from October 1st, 2025 through November 26th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Subвод?
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the 2025-2026 co-curricular recommendations as per the attachment. Do I have a motion?
Subвод?
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Crystal Miller's resignation as 7 through 12 Drama Club co-director effective August 19th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Subвод?
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint the following esports supervisors. Valerie Ray and Willard Lumont. Do I have a motion?
Subвод?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve Diane Poppleton's request for unpaid leave effective September hereby approve Diane Poppleton's request for unpaid leave effective September 22nd, 2025, not to exceed one year. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following co-curricular recommendations for the 2025-26 school year. Tyler Reifenberg, jazz band, stage band at $4,998, marching band, multi-grade at $5,520, musical assistant, B, multi-grade at $1,260. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment period. I didn't receive anything. Anybody? Last chance.
I would like to say something. I've been praying for years, no cell phones in schools.
Everybody knows, embrace that.
I thought you loved cell phones.
No, I hate them. They're useful at the times, but I want to say the first week, thereabouts of school, I've had several students mention that they really don't miss them. They enjoy not having to carry it, wonder where is this at? They're actually communicating with other students instead of doing this, even though the student's right next to them. So, that's, just that I'm very happy about no cellphone policy.
Thank you. Okay, future dates. Coming up, October 2nd, the Homecoming Parade and Bonfire. October 3rd, Homecoming Football Game at 7:00 PM. October 14th is our next Board of Education meeting, sorry, at 6:30 PM. October 18th is the Wall of Distinction Dinner at 5:00 at Theodore's. And that is it. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for discussion of legal matters and the personal employment history. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now in executive session. We will not be returning publicly.
Should've waited another five minutes. I don't think we're allowed to have a meeting shorter than that.